I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, please turn your cell phones off and mic goes on.
Mayor Bane.
Here.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Becker.
Here.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Scalisi.
Here.
Okay, at this time I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of June 11th, 2018. I'd saw move.
Second.
You have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motions are, or I mean, minutes are approved. Visitors and delegation, I believe the chief has a group that he would like to recognize?
Yes.
I apologize, this is gonna take a little bit of time, so you'll bear with me. The delegation here, obviously we have all of Brush Police, most of Brush Police Department here. We have Commander Crone from Fort Morgan, Chief of Public Safety, Paul Schultz. Come on in, yeah. And Commander Sharp. Notably what everybody understands that we had the semi come through town and created havoc, but it just didn't create havoc in Brush, it created havoc all over Morgan County and Logan County. So, before I start, I was gonna let the chief here make a statement if he wanted to.
Sure.
Well, thank you for inviting us up. Pleasure to see you, Mayor, Council. I just wanna comment on this event that collectively, this was probably one of the scariest events we've ever been involved with. And we're glad to assist and the outstanding performance and bravery of all the officers involved certainly warrant recognition and we're honored to be here tonight and assist with that with Chief Anderson. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Corporal Blank.
Yes, sir.
And Fee, you're part of this family too, so you come up here. And bring that good-looking young man. Wherever you can find a place to stand. So, what I wanted to do, based upon the actions that Corporal Blank took that night, wanna give Corporal Blank, it's the second highest award in the department. It's called the Award of Merit. So, if you'll bear with me and let me read this for you, so you'll understand what happened. On 4/28/2018, Corporal Ross Blank assisted Logan County with a stolen semi truck, which was on Highway 6 approaching Brush, Colorado. It was determined the semi truck was actually pursuing the Logan County deputy. Once Corporal Blank was in the area, the driver of the stolen semi truck attempted to cause a head-on collision with Corporal Blank. As the speeds increased, the pursuit entered the city limits of Brush. The driver of the stolen semi truck slammed on his brakes twice and attempted to get Corporal Blank to run into the back end of him. As the chase continued westbound on Highway 34, the driver of the stolen semi truck went directly at multiple innocent citizens in an attempt to create head-on collisions. In fact, the semi did strike one vehicle at speeds of 70 to 100 miles per hour. This clearly was an attempt by the driver of the semi to kill or seriously injure innocent motorists. Corporal Blank immediately realized the intentions of the driver and decided he needed to take prompt action to stop the potential loss of life. Corporal Blank obtained his rifle with a clear and direct decision to fire upon the stolen semi truck through his patrol car windshield. Once this action proved ineffective, he realized he was going to need to shoot the driver to cease the intentional assassination attempts on our citizens. Corporal Blank fired multiple rounds at the driver, again proving ineffective. The pursuit continued toward Fort Morgan where the driver of the stolen semi intensely struck a Fort Morgan police officer, causing injury and destruction to the patrol car. Once back onto I-76, the semi traveled eastbound in the westbound lanes, again targeting innocent motorists. The stolen semi, uh, bear with me. Stolen semi, uh... I lost my spot, I'm gonna have to get glasses. A stolen semi truck, uh, went towards Colorado Avenue and Mill Street where Corporal Blank began warning drivers to get off the roadway. The stolen semi went eastbound on Mill Street. Corporal Blank was out of his car when the semi driver went directly at him in an attempt to run down Corporal Blank. Corporal Blank then fired at the driver of the semi, which caused a redirection and the driver struck Corporal Blank's patrol car, destroying it. The pursuit ended after additional carnage was created in the city and the driver went into a home where he attempted to obtain firearms. Corporal Blank was able to get a ride from a citizen and he, Corporal Blank, fully prepared to enter the home to rescue the family. However, the suspect was apprehended before this occurred. It is my extreme pleasure to award Corporal Blank with the second highest medal in the organization, the Award of Merit. To receive this award, a member must show performance above and beyond what is normally expected and to accomplish the actions by use of exemplary initiative rather than successfully carrying out of an assigned task. Corporal Blank utilized sound decision-making when he engaged the suspect multiple times in an event to prevent the innocent loss of life. Although there were many factors working against him, he overcame those obstacles and prepared to rescue a family from a hostile suspect. Corporal Blank is to be commended for the actions he took on the night of 4/28 of 2018. I therefore, with gratitude and appreciation, present him the Award of Merit. I'll let you have the last word.
All right. So, I don't need to introduce myself now since we've taken care of that. So, again, the last time that I was recognized in front of the council was actually a surprise for me. I was here on an unrelated matter and I was told that one of the citizens that I'd given a ticket had come in and said that I treated him nicely and it was a nice surprise. Recently, I was asked to generate a one-minute statement for council as I was to receive a commendation. As some of you may know, keeping it short is not my strong point. I wanted to express my sincere gratitude to the City of Brush. Chief Anderson?
Thank you.
The Morgan County Dispatchers, our Morgan County Sheriffs, all those deputies that night, the Fort Morgan officers that were just as helpful in those circumstances, everybody else, the wildlife officers, the log lane marshals, the State Patrol, all of the police department here in Brush, ambulance and fire for their actions. The partnerships between our organizations was undoubtedly an assistance that night. To the citizens of Brush and the multitude of supportive citizens expressing their love and support for their local law enforcement, thank you. We do this for you. Our community's response to this absurd criminal act was overwhelming and welcomed. I also wanted to take a moment to thank one Brush citizen in particular. Amid the chaos of an unfolding, clear and present danger to our community at large, one man stopped to check on me. Brave, you step up, your partner? I wanna thank you personally and in front of your peers for your heroic actions that night.
Thank you.
And I've got a couple things for you. I, I, I'm not gonna meet my minute, I'm sorry. So, there's a law enforcement, law enforcement concept that I have stolen from my lieutenant. It's a tactical porcupine concept and it's, it's this thing I love in policing where you look cuddly, you're approachable. It is a very strange creature that stands out, but it's also something that is a force to be reckoned with. And so, to you, I've got a custom coffee mug. Hopefully you like coffee or tea. Citizen porcupine. And on the back, it's a reminder for that small act of giving me a ride, checking on me that night. And that's just one. Also got a, one of our new Brush Police Department patches. And as I'm sure your family knows, we also have a challenge going for you. We don't give a lot of these out, so these are coveted by us. And you get a little letter too. And this I'm not gonna read out 'cause I know I'm already killing my minute. Please read that at your leisure and again, in front of your peers.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We faced an unforeseen and difficult obstacle on the evening of April 28th. The danger brought to our entire northeastern community was staggering. I hope I've done my community and peers proud. Should the rest of the summer continue without significant incident, I will not complain. Should the column be shook again, I am confident that the men and women who dutifully serve our communities will remain steadfast even at the face of overwhelming odds. I was not alone on this incredible case. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
And with that, I will not be giving a report tonight.
All right, fair enough. Thank you, Officer Blank, and thank you to the citizen who came to his aid. One of the things I, I realized when I moved to Brush that I liked about this town is I, I grew up in large cities. My dad was in the military, we moved quite a bit. And I tell people, people that have lived out here all their lives don't sometimes realize how nice it is to live in a community where you can go out and walk in the street at night and not give a thought for your safety. That may not be as true today as it was when I first moved here, but I'm really heartened by the fact that we have officers that'll step forward and do their duty and we have a community that is ready to reach out and help. Thanks very much to all of you. Okay, next item on our agenda, this is the time where citizens are invited to speak to council on items that are not on the agenda. There's a three-minute time limit per person unless otherwise noted by the mayor. Please note that no formal action will be taken on these items during this time due to the open meeting law provision. However, they may be placed on a future posted agenda if action is required. Is there anyone that would like to speak to council? Please give your name and address.
Jeanette Carbin, 16200 Morgan County Road, 28.5 Brush, Colorado. As everybody knows, we have been recently challenged with a people's right to freedom of speech and the right to be heard and the right to be heard respectfully and intelligently and with regard to what people have to say. My concern is that we have social media. And I don't know of any of you, other than one person, that does have a Facebook page out there that lets your constituents communicate with you, express opinions, express criticism, whatever. But I do know of one. And this person has chosen to ban people from her public Facebook page under which she presents herself as an official of the City of Brush. Anybody that offers any criticism or opposes anything that she may put out there on her Facebook page, she will either ban them or block them. Now, where is the freedom of speech in this? Federal court has weighed in on this question. It has determined that the First Amendment's Free Speech Clause does indeed prohibit office holders from blocking social media users on the basis of their views. I'm just putting this out here because I don't think that the citizens that voted for this particular person feels like they are part of what she is trying to put out there, what she is trying to do in her mind to serve her community. So, just so you're aware, especially you, that what you're doing is not right and it's wrong. And, and you know what? You can't comment on what I'm saying.
Because I'll either comment now or I'll do it during the reporting period. But I will make a comment about what you said. And I will clarify my public page.
Let's move on, public comment. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to council?
Cassandra Hall, 101 South Curtis. I'm also here about Ms. Jenny Anderson's webpage. She has it listed as a government page and she is using the, I have a picture, her saying a government page. She's using the City Brush official logo. And I would like the council to take advice to have her remove this, to change it from a government page to a public or private personal page. Because when you look up the City of Brush, she's one of the top constituents up there. And there's, when I look at her webpage, there is four out of 20 posts that actually relate to the residents of Ward 3 that is not hateful, biased, just disrespectful. I have been blocked. I have called the city with my concerns of Ward 3, about the dog park, about the water fountains not being turned on. She has not made herself available and her page is listed as a government page and I can't communicate with her and she has put this page up there for her constituents to communicate issues that we want addressed and she's not doing it. And I asked the council to review this page and ask that she take down the official Brush logo and change the government page to a personal page. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All of my contact information is on the page and the reason the page was ever put up to begin with is because I was not getting my messages, my phone number, email, text, and private, you can also private message through this page. So, you are telling the truth, Cat. And anybody here can also look at the page and if there's something that is missing that I need to put on, I can put on about the contact. But I have some etiquette and it's very short and it's very clear. Because as an elected official, I didn't give up any of my state rights not to be harassed. And that means my public page as well. And I'm gonna differentiate between the public page and the government page. The city page, the police department page, the volunteer fire department page, those are all government pages. My page is a public page. Uh, my, the first thing that's pinned, page rules and etiquette, and this is very short, it's just gonna take me a minute. The public page is a courtesy and a privilege for my Ward 3 constituents. Not part of my duties as a counselor, but as a means to post information and to separate my private and public life. No threats, intimidation, bullying, personal attacks, harassment, crap flooding, or inciting violence are tolerated. Put another way, if it's against the law outside of Facebook, it's not allowed here either. Our East Morgan County Library can find resources on proper etiquette if you don't know. But if you can't be civilized on my page, I'm not gonna allow it. And if you look through the posts, the memes, a lot of people weigh in once in a while. It was never established to be a discussion page, it was for information. So, the people in my ward know what's going on at City Hall. I reported on FEMA, I reported on the grant for the fire department, I reported on the flood plane and the floodway. This page goes way back at least three years. So, I'm not buying it, Cat. You also know where I live and if at any time you wanted to walk down and knock on my door, you're welcome to do that as well. I have never, ever denied anybody off my email, a text, a phone, letter, or any other form of communication.
I think, is there anybody else that would like to make public comment before we close that period?
I just wanna present this picture where it says that it is a government organization in Brush, Colorado.
Yeah, and that, you know, and that is exactly what, I tried to get that off and put public page instead of government. And I'm sorry about that. That's something that I have to, I can't get off there from the Facebook. I can't get that off. I would rather it say public page. But if you go down and you read, and I'll keep trying until I get that off, Cat. I don't like it that way either. It should say public page.
Okay, hold on a minute. Well, one, one thing I'd like to do, I understand the concerns that the citizens are raising. This is a new era when we have government officials that use social media to take comment from their citizens. And I can understand the feeling that if you put a page out there and you want public comment, you should accept public comment. But I think this is a situation where we need our city attorney to look into the legal ramifications of a public page. I, I don't believe anybody else has a page like that, I don't.
I don't.
But I would like to go ahead and have Bo research this for us to get some clarification on the issue of public, what the public page is about.
Well, when I set it up, I set it up with direction from Diane Cruzwell at CML and from the, and I also looked into the open public records. Because my intent here is to separate my, as you all have your, for example, one Facebook page for everything.
No, no, I don't have it for everything. My Facebook page is a personal page. I don't use Facebook to espouse my political views.
But when you talk and have the conversation with your constituents, that opens you up to open public records and at that point, you're then subject to open public records request. And the other two, and the other two are, I don't give out goods and services from my public page and I don't converse with people back and forth. I don't have back and forths. Once in a while, there's a, they give an opinion and I give mine, but it's not allowed to go on and on and on. And this is for my constituents. The activists who come on, I don't really care. I don't care what their opinion is. But I'm not gonna have back and forths with my constituents because that makes me subject to open public records and I'm not gonna do it. My page, my rules. And I've done it based on open public records.
Okay, let's go ahead and move along to management. Management 5A. We're looking for a motion to approve the final settlement with buildings by design for the completion of the course of Pettus Park Parking Lot Project. Do I have a motion to either approve or deny this settlement?
I'll make a motion to approve the final settlement with buildings by design for the completion of the course at Pettus Park Lot Project.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Discussion? Andrea, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Bane.
Yes.
Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Becker?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Scalisi?
Yes.
Okay, B, 5B has been stricken, we're not ready for that tonight, so we'll move on to C. And I'm looking for a counselor to introduce the ordinance by reading the title. And it's ordinance number 872-18, an ordinance approving the certain lease between the City of Brush, Colorado and Commercial Cellular Inc., DBA Verizon Wireless dated June 25th, 2018, for an initial term of five years with up to three additional five-year terms for an area of approximately 900 square feet for the, for an initial base rent of $18,000 annually. Do I have a counselor that would like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce ordinance number 872-18, an ordinance approving the certain lease between the City of Brush, Colorado and Comnet Cellular Inc., DBA Verizon Wireless dated June 25th, 2018, for an initial term of five years with up to three additional five-year terms for an area approximately 900 square feet for an initial base rent of $18,000 annually.
Okay, the ordinance has been introduced. Do we have a motion to either approve or deny the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 872-18.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Discussion? One thing I'd like to say here is that I know there are many younger people. I still have my landline, I'll probably never get rid of it 'cause I can't force myself to keep that cellphone on me all the time. But I'm very glad that we're going to have the ability to get better cellphone service in Brush. I think it's the future and I think a lot of younger people, that seems to be their only method of communication, especially during emergencies, so I think this is gonna be a good thing for the city. Okay, if there's no more discussion, Andrea, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Scalisi?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Becker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Bane?
Yes. Okay, moving on to 5D. We have a revised engagement letter from Lauer, I don't know who it is.
Zabo.
Zabo?
Yes.
Okay, Zabo and Associates. Joanne.
Yes, in your packet this evening is a revised engagement letter from our auditors, Lauer, Zabo, and Associates. You may recall that the first of the year, we bought, brought in the original engagement letter. That engagement letter included a single audit. The auditors were here last week for three days and completed their little process of the overview of our records. And at the end of that, Scott did agree with me that we do not need to do a single audit. And what the difference is between a single audit and our regular audit is, we do that regular audit every year. But anytime you have federal grants, that total, it doesn't have to be just one, it can be all of them combined, total over $750,000 that you pay out that year. You may get it, but pay it out in two years, then you don't have to have a single audit. But if you pay out that, those expenses for over $750,000 in one year, then you have to do a single audit. And once he got through, he did agree with me, we do not have, there were four federal grants in 2017, one of them being, including that from the downtown project. But it did not put us over that $750,000 threshold. So, therefore, we do not have to do the single audit. And that's why we're bringing this back to revise, showing that we don't have a single audit and it does lower our audit by $2,700.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll be looking for a motion to either approve or deny the revised engagement letter from Lauer, Zabo, and Associates.
I move that we approve the revised engagement letter from Lauer, Zabo, and Associates.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Discussion? Andrea, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Becker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Bane?
Yes.
Counselor Scalisi?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to finance.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve bills from June 11th through the 25th of 2018 in the amount of $737,000 and thirty, let me start this again. In the amount of $737,367.34.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion for a second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Becker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Bane?
Yes.
Counselor Scalisi?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Did that include a, um, I was gonna say mail, so I didn't get a chance to look over the bills. $737,000, did that include a movement of a CD or a payment?
No.
What was the big case?
I think there was a big payment on there for...
We have a, a large payment on there for the, the number two water payment on the English property for the water line that went in. That was $256,000. Then we also have the, a payment on the fire department expansion of $138,000. And then there's actually three full pages almost of other bills that are to be paid. There's $34,000 for the basketball courts improvements, $23,000 for infield mix and turfis and hill, whoops, I got that wrong. Twenty-fourth, $23,477 to graphs for turf for the golf course. That thing out there that they golf on. And just other largens that they all add up. That also includes payroll of approximately $130,000 as well.
Thank you, Joanne.
Okay, moving on to finance. Joanne, do you have anything else for finance? I mean, I mean, for reporting?
No, none of this.
Okay. Travis, you already said you were done, so let's move on to Parks and Recreation Labs.
Uh, just a couple things. This past three or four weeks has been really busy with the rec department. We've had, we had our over 50, under 50 golf tournament this past weekend. We also had the Brush Rush and a kickball tournament out, out at the softball fields. Brush Rush wasn't attended as well as, as what it has been in years past, but I think a lot of that's because there was also two other races in Akron and Sterling, plus just a lot going on around, around the... there was also two other races in Akron and Sterling, plus just a lot going on around, around the area. And so, uh, attendance in that wasn't quite as good. Um, uh, the week before that, we had our, uh, Summer Sizzler, and we had over thirty teams compete in, uh, on our fields here and also in Fort Morgan. And that, that went very well, and this week we are having our Brad A. Mack softball tournament, so, um, things are pretty busy, uh, through June and, and going well. And, and as far as an update on the golf course, um, we did have to replant quite a bit of stuff with sod and also seed. It's coming back very well, and we're hoping that by the men's, uh, uh, men's and women's club championships that the course is in, uh, pretty close to, to normal, normal, um, uh, condition. We had a lot of winter kill. Um, plan on doing some things a little bit different this offseason and stuff, and, and it was very unfortunate, but it was a, uh, another, another learning lesson that, uh, that hopefully we don't repeat, repeat the same thing that ha- that happened, uh, this past fall.
Thank you, Lance.
You know, I'd just like to comment in regards to the, to the grass. Um, I was in Alamosa a couple of weeks ago for, um, the all-state cross-country race, and it was at Cole Park, and their park had a lot of winter kill too, so I don't think it's just unique to Brush.
It's not.
I just, there was, it just was a, a tough winter, and so, like I said, a lot of their park was.
Right.
Their, the grass was, uh, really bad too.
And I was actually down visiting my brother down in Pueblo at Walking Stick, which is one of the premier golf courses down, uh, down south, and, and they had several fairways that had the majority of their fairways, uh, eliminated from winter kill, so. Tough winter, I mean, it never really got too warm, but it didn't get too cold and didn't get a lot of moisture, so. It was like the perfect storm for us, and, and, uh, we're hoping to, uh, eliminate that problem here in the future, so.
One thing I wanna say too, Lance, uh, I'd like to encourage people that haven't been to the golf course to check out the improvements that have been made up there.
Yeah.
It looks very nice.
Yeah, the parking lot's great, and, and inside looks, looks wonderful. Uh, we still do have a, a little bit of a culprit in there, trying to fix some of the sewer issue, but we, but we plan on doing that shortly. I know we've, we've taken some steps to, uh, eliminate that, and, uh, I think we're getting closer and closer, so. Um, doesn't always happen, but when it does, it's, 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 it's not very pleasant, but, uh, but we're trying to fix it.
All right, thank you.
So I was up by there Saturday night, and so I was kinda surprised it was about nine o'clock, so what are the weekend, uh, what are, are there summer hours different than the winter hours, or what's?
Well, there was a tournament, so, uh, we, we normally are open till about nine o'clock at night. Uh, we try to shut, if there's a lot of people there, we will stay open a little bit later, but we try to get everybody out of there by eleven. Um, a lot of it just depends on the demand. If there's, if there's a family out here having a good time or whatever, we end up staying open a little bit later, but our hours are at nine o'clock at night.
Okay, so you're, you're just going with the, um, golf, for golfers?
Uh, we, uh, or public, like, if, if there was a, if there was a, if there was a business meeting or something like that, we would, we would, uh, leave it open. Like, when there's a wedding or something like that, we keep it open until, till, uh, later than our nine, nine o'clock hours.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, moving on to city clerk, Andrea.
Can you just remind her that tomorrow Fort Morgan is hosting the city and county meeting? And I placed the agenda that Fort Morgan sent to us in front of you, just kind of to help you remind you tomorrow to go to that. And, um, also the liquor licensing authority, we have received a transfer of ownership, um, liquor license for the retail store that Grocery Cart has operated, and it's now being operated by Fresh Foods Inc. And had the opportunity to meet the new owner, and just a really nice family, so hopefully everyone will get that chance to meet them. And, um, that license application will be sent into the state for their approval as well, so it's not, they get four months to operate on the Brushy Cart's license. And then in your packet, I did a little memo about ordinance and publication. It's been the practice of the city of Brush for many, many years to send the ordinance prior to the council meeting to meet the deadlines of the Fort Morgan Times, and now with, um, some of their changes, um, we have to have that ordinance to them by noon on Thursday, and we don't have the ability to call that back in the event council doesn't approve that ordinance on first reading. So Bo and I kind of discussed the process, and I think what you'll see from now on is the first reading and then publication the following week on Wednesday, 'cause it has to be published in our local paper. And then second reading, and then the final adoption will be one month after the first reading, so. It, it's just gonna cause it to be a little bit longer, but it just provides more accurate information to the citizens. It doesn't cause us to waste money on a publication that shouldn't go, so.
So normally, we used a first reading on an issue, and we vote, and the next meeting we have a second.
Right.
We're gonna have a meeting in between.
Yes, 'cause the statute calls for the second reading ten days after the publication, so we don't have that time to get in, so. Just letting you know.
Okay. Administrator, Monte.
Okay, a couple items. First one, a quick report on the fire department building. If you've been by there lately, you'll see that the, uh, footers are going in, so you're, there's quite a bit of work starting now. And just expect over the next thirty days for it to really start to shape up, and shortly after that, you'll probably see some of the steel walls going up. Um, they're still looking for in October, um, finalizing that project and getting done there. The other thing is that CML, there was a breakout session on ADA, American Disability Act, and we're gonna start focusing some, some time and efforts towards some policies in regards to that and a plan to move forward with ADA accessibility in the community. We have a current practice, but we wanna formalize that just for the future. That's all I have.
Okay, moving on to number eight. Are there any council reports?
Do we have any updates on the validation?
I'm sorry.
Do we have any updates on the, on the validation, with my, with my due?
Uh, well, we'll have one at the next council meeting, uh, but the mayor and I had some discussions regards to it, but we'll slowly start moving that forward.
Okay, moving on to eight B, report on Colorado Municipal League Conference. Do we have any reports?
I'm gonna wait until, I just got back, not even in back, I've got my notes, but I'm gonna wait. Um, one thing I did not do, um, we, those of us who attended district in Sterling had been given the full list of House Bill and Senate Bills, and so I can go to the legislative session. So if anybody else wants to report on the legislative session, um, I just felt like we had a really good session in Sterling, and it, um, wasn't necessary, so I'm not gonna, um, repeat it. But I do have the full list that we got at district, so if anybody wants to go over any of those bills.
Okay. Dan, do you have any?
I have a two-page list of.
Okay, all right.
What I attended.
Okay.
Um, I might skim some of it, but, uh, they talked about, uh, the one, first one I went to was what's new at DOLA? And, uh, I'm not sure who was there, 'cause you know how big they are. So if you were there and I'm misspeaking, you can correct me, I won't be offended. Uh, they talked about the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen budget. They're gonna have over twenty million dollars in grant money available per cycle period. Uh, there, there's a Department of Resilience, it's a newly developed, one after the two thousand and thirteen floods, they developed this department. Um, there's also a gray and black, um, it's a market marijuana enforcement grant program, but it's a reimbursement grant, so you have to spend the money and then you get it back. Um, they also had a, uh, police officers' mental health support program, which is funded with a one-point-nine million dollar, um, grant. Our money's available, but these monies will affect the table, so we have to be careful with that. And there was a small communities', uh, housing workshop gonna be held in Montrose in August. So it might be valuable, um, if somebody can go to that, and I'm not saying I won't, but, um, it's August ninth, and I imagine it's an all-day workshop. The next one I went to was, uh, tax cut bill, and a lot of that just kind of just, uh, over my head, but they're repealing, uh, the tax cut bill, uh, January two thousand and nineteen. And then there's a Cadillac tax that'll come a place, come in place two thousand and twenty-two. And Joanne, you may already know about this, but, you know, and they talked about the HSA expansions. Additional contributions can be made. Employees need to continue their HSA and be complying with that. The next one, making affordable housing a reality in small communities. This is through the Division of Housing will assist and help build housing, especially low income. Technical assistance is also available. Steps needed to complete, uh, to be completed from the Division of Housing first. One is complete a housing needs assessment, and DOLA will help with that. Develop a community housing plan is number two. And number three is assess local capacity to determine if other resources will need to be utilized to implement the plan. Assess if a community individual is willing to come, to give land for a project. And the opportunity zone, and I know that I've heard about, uh, Greg from MCEDC talk about the opportunity zone, and I'm not sure whether Morgan County is included in that or not, but Greg will have that information. And then there was some discussion about adaptive reuse of the building, and central school come up to my head, so. It's maybe an area to look at. Uh, next session was harassment issues for elected officials. Organizational climate can be a breeding ground for harassment. The higher in the organization the issue arises, the more difficult it is to deal with. They talked about harassment policies and setting a high bar for liability. Uh, conduct policy not only for council, but also for, uh, contractors, vendors, et cetera. And conduct guidelines need to be posted on every agenda for city council. School safety was another one I went to. Number one priority for families is school shootings. We also need to be concerned with bullying, drug abuse, gangs. Cannot only focus on the school shooting. Uh, emergency operation plan, I'm sure the school district has one, but if not, they need to develop one. Recovery following the incident, uh, we talked about community businesses stepping up to help the school, maybe with supplies or whatever need they have. Um, on-duty police officers, chief, this is something that, and I can't remember what town was, was doing this, but they were having their, their officers, when they're doing their reports, um, and I don't know whether your officers do their reports in the car, or they come to the office, or whatever, but they were suggesting that when the reports are done, maybe do them on the school grounds, 'cause it maybe helped detract anybody that's thinking of doing any harm to the, to the students. Um, also teaching parents what to look for and how to help. And then the last one I went to was, uh, Heal Cities and then Town Campaign. This is one Vicki's been working on. We've been a Heal City for five years.
Sounds, uh, sounds like.
Something like that. Um, and we had, uh, Recreation, I believe, from Sterling, Wes, or. Anyways, he helped with a program. He had thirty-five thousand dollar grant, required no matching funds, uh, needed. Uh, and that's something applied for every year, and Lance, I'll get his name for you if, if, uh, that would help.
Yeah.
But what they did, they were working with the school districts. The school districts provided the lunch, Recreation provided the entertainment. Uh, you, with the thirty-five thousand, you can't use it to buy food, you have to use it to buy equipment that the kids could use when they come for lunch. And then there's a Dr. Cog grant worth two hundred thousand dollars for bicycles and trails. That's my three minutes.
That was, that was a very good report. And a couple of classes I, I went to as well.
Yeah.
Uh, the only thing I would add, I, I went to a class that I felt it was important to go to on crim- the criminal justice changes that are happening in Colorado. House Bill sixteen dash thirteen oh nine, we've talked about it before, requires a public defender for detainees at the first court appearance. That'll actually go into effect on July first, so in the next week or so. Uh, I guess what's good for Brush is that we very rarely detain anyone, uh, and usually release on personal recognizance, and that, that will still be fine, if I understand incorrectly. The other, the other change that will be happening on January first, two thousand and twenty, is Senate Bill eighteen dash two oh three, which requires a municipality to provide independent, intelligent defense for each defendant facing a possible jail sentence for a violation of a municipal ordinance. And, uh, one proactive approach, I think, I, I, it's very rare that the city of Brush incarcerates someone. Well, one proactive approach that I think it'd be important to take, uh, so that this doesn't come into play, that they advised, is they said, you know, a lot of the ordinance were written twenty, thirty years ago, is, is for us to look at our ordinances and look at those things where there is a possible jail sentence involved that we've never put anybody in jail for. They say check out those ordinances, because a lot of times in the past, they were written with a, from lenient to a very heavy penalty. So I think it's a good idea to look through our ordinances and see if we have any of those things, where we can, we can change the ordinance to take the jail time off there, and there's not gonna be a possibility that becomes a problem later. Uh, that's the only thing I would add to Dan's list.
Did that, was your understanding that that included people who cannot pay their fines? Who would then be subjected to, if they can't pay their fines, um, then there's, um, action?
They can't be arrested though for failure to pay.
Okay, can you clarify that, because I?
There's other legislation that came out a couple of years ago with that, yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and one, one thing that was talked about there in relation to that, and this was something that the class instructor said may happen. It, it's not law now, but he said the future may be that posting bond for a defense goes away. And the reason he said that is, is that it may change, in this country, things are changing along those lines. It said it may change to where the, you can only be detained if you're a flight risk or danger to others. And, and he said that's not necessarily a, a bad thing at all, because in this country, a lot of times, it depends on how much money you have, whether you can post that bond to get out of jail. So people with many more assets have the ability to get out and stay out before trial, where people who have less resources aren't able to be. He said that the country may be heading towards something like that in the future. Okay, so if there is, are no other reports, uh, we have a works session scheduled, uh, after this, and I believe that is on, if I get my computer to work. Historic preservation ordinance revisions discussion, and also a campground rules discussion.
Hold on just a second, because I wanna, I wanted to, I told Jeanette I would address that. Um, I spoke about it when Kat, um, spoke.
I'm sorry, please call me Ms. Hall.
Ms. Hall.
Thank you.
Um, did I answer your concerns, Jeanette, or is there anything else? Because if there is, we can talk about it afterwards. You can get ahold of me on any of those other four ways to get in touch with me, and I'd be happy to talk about it. We'll see.